President, we do have a forum. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioner's Court and approval for same on November the ninth, twenty twenty-two. They do not have those. They're going, we're going to get them. So we're going to table item number two. There'll be no action on that item number two. We will move to item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bill for payment as submitted. So got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions, discussion about the bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying the county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner LaPretz, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general announcements. Uh, any, I think Steve's here with, with uh, the roofing company. You'd like to just give us a quick update?
Appreciate it. We said waterproof by Thanksgiving, so no more leaks. They'll be finished thirty year roof. I first and then wait on period process, the, the after Christmas, a maximum forty years on. So uh, we're very thankful to be a part of the project and uh, appreciate the support. We uh, we've left out everything except.
Anyone have any question for him?
No, please.
I'll tell you, Stephen, and I've, I've told him this personally, but I would say it publicly. I've worked with a lot of companies. But, but yours was a blessing. You did exactly what you said you was gonna do when you said you was gonna do it, and that's very unusual in this day and age. And so thank you. Thank you for the job you've done for Benzek County.
Appreciate it.
Any other announcements or?
Yes, I got one.
Okay.
We got moved into the new dispatch center last week with minimal hiccups. It's running smooth. And the ladies working over are very appreciative of it. And just a minute ago, when we paid the bills, we paid the very last bill on that project and it must allow us to meet our deadlines. So we got the full five hundred thousand dollars out of the series granted.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you, David.
Any other general announcements needs to be made, anything?
I've got one.
Okay.
Everybody eat plenty of turkey tomorrow.
Yeah. Thank you for, thank you. The, any other announcement information needs to be before us? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, anyone sign up for any public comments or anything? Okay. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider approved twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Benzek County Library Advisory Board. Aubrey, you may address the course.
Morning. And thank you for calling me. Um, so. Okay. So we have four spots that we needed to fill. And we needed one in precinct one, one in precinct two, and two in precinct three. And I'm Aubrey Alley, president. Information. Um, so I, I actually in interviews, I had a lot of good candidates. I have some that I didn't get on the board, so I'll be putting those aside. Someone new. Um, we have Jimmy Williams in precinct one, and he has been on other boards. She works with BFW. Um, she's ready to go. Diane Oler in precinct two, she's just got the drive. I talked to her in her interview about being over outreach. She's just gonna be great. Precinct three, we have two, Tom Humphries and Hannah Goodson. I talked to Tom in the interview about being over grants so that we have someone always looking and making sure we're doing our due diligence and getting what we can there. And then Hannah Goodson, I'm excited about her. Um, I talked to her about her passion for uh, young adult education, and she wants to implement a program where we did GE classes and things like that. And during this break, she's gonna be visiting another library that already has that in place. And so she's gonna learn about it and figure out what we need to do. Um, and then we have a new Vice President Emily Manning. Um, she's been on the board. She's homeschooler. Libraries or her kids are always up there. We're excited about her. And then I, as the new president, which I've been um, interim president for a few months. Um, and so I was voted in to take over for this next term, and I'm just very passionate about where the library is going. Um, libraries are changing. They're becoming more like community centers, and we've really started implementing those changes, and I'm just passionate about that. Um, so with that, I can just list off the Library Advisory Board twenty twenty-two, um, twenty twenty-three for your approval. Precinct one, Donna Toops, Brenda Fuller, Jimmy Williams, David Trudeau. Precinct two, Diane Oler, Emily Manning, Mary Aheart, myself, Aubrey Alley. Precinct three, Tom Humphries, Hannah Goodson, John Sabo, Russell Harris. Precinct four, William Howell, Rhonda Adams, Jennifer Bowie, Maxine Fuller, and our Officer Secretary Donna Toops, Vice President Emily Manning, and President myself, Aubrey Alley.
Any questions for Aubrey?
No.
We'll move. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Benzek County Library Advisory Board. Have a second by Commissioner LaPretz. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discuss and consider approving the Benzek County broadband study and action plan. It is a great honor to enter to introduce David Cleveland from East Texas Council of Government to the Commissioners. Uh, this is uh, first time I ever met David. I was a new county judge. I was getting emails from him, but I didn't know who they were. So I just hit delete, delete, delete. And then he showed up here and introduced himself, so.
You have a second, Judge?
That's fine.
Well, Judge, I brought a lot of papers to you.
Good.
The good thing about um, the good thing about it is that this is not your crack paper. And if I could just ask for the court's indulgence before I uh, get in and start the presentation on what is a very exciting day, I think, for Benzek County with respect to broadband. I, I just wanted to, to express my, uh, we're the day before Thanksgiving, right? And uh, so this is a really good time to express gratitude to folks that have really made a difference in East Texas. And Judge, you are certainly one of those folks. And you're probably gonna talk to me after this court meeting for bringing uh, these matters up, and I'm willing to take that. I believe, uh, sir, I just wanted to indicate that you're having at the end of your term and uh, that you're retiring soon. And I just wanted to say, you know, on behalf of East Texas Council Governments, our elected officials in the fourteen counties. Thank you for everything that you've done uh, the last several years. Um, you have made an impact, not only a very positive impact. Not only in Benzek County, but through your service on the Chief Elected Officials, World Transportation Planning Organization Board, and in other uh, roles, uh, you've given of yourself consoльship and made a significant impact on this fourteen county region we call East Texas. So Judge, I, I just want to say thank you for your service.
Thank you, David. Thank you.
End of that, right? Secondly, um, Mr. West, he is the current uh, member that served as the representative on the East Texas Council Governments Executive Committee. So he's the individual that represents Benzek County and all Benzek County cities on our board. He's just rendered exceptional service for the years that he's been there. Commissioner Melton, bring this uh, to Commissioner West to fill the same role. And I just wanted to express appreciation to find commissioning for all they have done. Thank you for your service. Commissioner LaPretz, you're not getting away. Uh, this commissioner, you're gonna hear a little bit more about this in a couple of minutes. But this commissioner and this judge uh, served as key members on the broadband, local broadband uh, team that put together the plan for Benzek County. Sir, it's been an honor working side by side with you and getting the knowledge you all over these many months to put this together, and I understand that. And with that, with all those thank yous behind me, I did want to also introduce uh, members of my team um, that are here. Rebecca, if you can stand up. Chuck. These are members of the Department of Economic Development Team that are uh, doing a lot of the work behind the scenes uh, with me originally. We're working in fourteen different counties, putting this regional uh, broadband plan together. This was here about today. A lot of this, none of this could happen without Chad LaPretz, the judge, Rebecca, Chuck, and all the folks that put hard work in there. But last, certainly that leaves, I want to make a shout out to the folks at CIP. You have a whole row of CIP folks here. Donna McGred and Scott, that couldn't be here today, but Donna, the senior representative team along with these other fine folks, they were critical um, partners in this process. And they're a fine, outstanding company that really cares about the people in Benzek County. And when you have that sort of thing, look, they showed up for this week. That is an indication of their commitment straight away. Obviously, we couldn't have done this without you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so Judge, thank you for that indulgence. Um, I can give you three different items to hand out for you today. One is a laminated map that I'm gonna identify and just talk about two of it of the six projects I have here today. This is a map for you to keep. There are extra copies of all these handouts that uh, you're free to, to use as you need uh, going forward. The second item, not necessarily doing this in order, but it's copy of my hard copy of the PowerPoint presentation that I'm gonna go through with you. The third item is, looks like this. It's the seven page executive summary that's really designed for public consumption. In seven pages, it gets to the bottom line of the six projects that have been, then I broadband projects that have been identified for Benzek County, gets down to what their uh, efficient cost start and so forth for uh, each of those projects. But I did want you to see, I understand from the judge that this is attached to your Commissioners' Court agenda today. I know there's uh, maybe uh, one or two of you that might be interested in reading the whole thing. This is all eighty pages of the report. This has detailed information on each of these projects. It has detailed budget information in uh, chapter four of this report. It has it broke down in two different ways. Uh, it has it broke down in a standard line item budget uh, for each of these six projects, and it also has it uh, broke down in what the federal government calls the SF four twenty-four format that's used for, for uh, for grant submissions. And after all, that's gonna be the next step, but that's for discussion at this now. So if you all decide to approve this plan today, the word grant will be removed from it, the grant, the grant report. Uh, the, and uh, this will be approved. Uh, uh, you'll be uh, moving right along with the rest of the East Texas region. So I wanted you to see what the whole report um, looked like. There's a whole bunch of additional information to hear about Benzek um, uh, from a broadband and demographic perspective as well. So with that, I want to jump right into the PowerPoint presentation with you. Here's the, the good news. And all my introductory comments are already touched on a couple of these things. One of them is that uh, Benzek County uh, through a local project team that's been identified by uh, Judge Kirkpatrick, has been addressing critical broadband connectivity needs through its partnership with the East Texas Council Governments. The strategy for East Texas is really a two-phase strategy that we're using to try to close the gap between urban and rural areas. You understand obviously that Dallas, San Antonio, Houston, Boston, you name the large metropolis, any of the large metropolises in Texas, they have a huge advantage over the rural areas like these sections when it comes to broadband. And that's because they, they have what's called density. They have high uh, numbers of, of people that live, millions, billions, and takes Houston, Dallas, and so forth that live in those areas. So for a private company, broadband provider, or internet service provider, as they're called, to come in and lay fiber and provide broadband service, it's a much easier business case for them to be able to do that because their return on investment is much, much quicker. In East Texas, that's not true. We have about eight hundred and uh, eight hundred and twenty thousand people in the fourteen county region. And for a broadband internet service provider to come in and give return on investment, the more rural you get, the more difficult that becomes. So that's why there was a need for um, this particular project. And our strategy to close the gap between the urban and the rural areas is a two-phase approach. Phase one is a local project identification process that's just been completed. And we had a local team that was comprised of the judge, the commissioner, CIP folks uh, and others that worked diligently with us to identify the top um, three to five projects for Benzek County. Now you're saying, hey, I see six projects here, not five. I'll tell you why that is. But the, the general uh, basic strategy um, that we gave each of the counties to for the county judge to pro- uh, 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 appoint a local project identification team, come up with three to five projects that are the most critical projects to move broadband forward. This is the end of the, that process, when we actually have a plan now. And that plan, uh, if you approve it today, our next step is to move forward and go after as much federal, state, and other funding sources implemented as many of these projects as possible. The second phase is there's also a regional middle mile advisory mostly of elected officials. We have one appointed official, but mostly elected officials that's working with the East Texas Council Governments to figure out the best strategies to lay a middle mile uh, uh, network, broadband network in the fourth decade to connect the fourteen counties in East Texas. Maybe this is the time for me to explain what the heck middle mile means anyway. Is this really in Greek speed or geek speed when you get right down to it? So the simplest way that I can explain, explain this to you is this, that first mile service really starts with the provider. So in this case, we'll use CIP as an example. They'll have a junction box or a main uh, uh, point where their broadband service begins. That's first mile. Uh, uh, last mile service is where you actually connect broadband service to the um, business or to the residents. Middle mile is everything else in between. In East Texas, we got a lot of middle mile, right? And so the strategy too is really to figure out the best strategy to uh, put in place a middle mile network that can provider, new or existing, any new or existing high-speed provider, can connect to complete last mile service to the customer. That process is ongoing, and is a separate part of the strategy. I'll be covering uh, and you'll see some of the proposed middle mile segments that are there for Benzek uh, are, are there for Benzek County in a couple of minutes. But those are the two strategies that we're using to close the gaps. Phase one, local identified projects, the top three to five projects move broadband forward. Phase two, regional middle mile network. So the base one summary, moving on in my presentation. We have now are presenting to the court a broadband action plan for Benzek County that again has been developed in partnership with, with that party. Bottom line is, your local folks still in the local project identification. Commissioner LaPretz, CIP, Hannah Pearson's been involved and helped with this summer as well, and other folks. They're the one that's done all the hard work, really uh, pulled this together. So we have that action plan, and that's what we're doing today. The uh, I've already indicated that uh, that the, the different in, interested parties that have provided input, comments, and information to support the work. And you also might wonder is how are we paying for all this? You know, these Texas Council Governments have been working on broadband for this region for eleven years. It's taken us that long to be able to finally in two thousand nineteen, we're awarded three hundred and seventy-five thousand in federal EBA funds. Those funds are being unmatched with a hundred and sixty-one thousand in local funds. So our total project budget to get this uh, broadband plan in place for fourteen counties in East Texas is five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. With that money, we're using that money to hire contractors and uh, PDC two and Design nine that are helping us with uh, this process as well. Then we have a great team that are partnering up with our local internet service providers in the county by county basis to put this together. The good news about the day is I'm not asking for any funds whatsoever from the court. The uh, the local project match that I mentioned, the hundred and sixty-one thousand is being contributed equally between the fourteen counties and the EDCs throughout the fourteen county region. And uh, and that's how we came up with that local match. But I'm not gonna ask you for any funding at this point because the, the, the planning process has been paid for. I already mentioned the members of the local project identification team that's been led by Judge Kirkpatrick and by Commissioner LaPretz. These, this team uh, that I've already talked to you about has been as many times as needed over the last several months to identify the three to five, and actually in this case, Benzek County, six projects to move broadband forward for Benzek County. Um, this is a really good time in this public forum to mention this very important point. When we're communicating about this broadband plan to the Texas region and the citizens of Benzek County, it's absolutely important that you help me carry this message. If you implement and bless this plan today, and we are successful in getting federal funding and state funding and other funding to implement as many of these projects as possible, let's say we get funding for all six. If we get all that in place, that does not mean that we're gonna address every single broadband need that exists in Benzek County today. That's a process, and it will take time. But through this local process, grassroots process, we've identified the top six broadband projects for the county that will significantly close the gap and bring us a right step forward uh, that we need to, so that we're competitive to uh, be able to keep our existing businesses and, and recruit new businesses to the region. Um, the second thing is, we were able to, COVID nineteen was not a pleasant experience, wouldn't you agree? But one of the benefits that came out of COVID nineteen, it will bring me, but one of the benefits were was that I was able to convince the Economic Development Administration, the US Department of Commerce, to allow us to have one of our, our three to five projects, in your case, six, that can uh, focus exclusively on residential broadband services. Long as we somehow tied that to telework, and, and that's because, you know, during COVID, a, a good deal of people were working from home. What has actually emerged through our process though is we, we certainly have, and you're gonna see this on, on Benzek County's broadband uh, plan now. We certainly have projects that focus only on business needs. We certainly have our residential project in most counties as well. But most of our projects really are blended projects that will uh, that serve business needs first, but by putting these networks in, it also serves residential needs as well. So we're real excited about blended projects to be able to place upon. All right. So if you uh, now look at the locally identified projects that's been, that's come up, I'll refer you to this wonderful map from our GIS team here. I'm not gonna go through each of these uh, today because I want to respect the court's time. Uh, and I want to get invited back. Just speaking to you all sometimes, and that means I need to be as brief as possible. But I, I want to identify these two uh, projects, highlight two of these projects for you. And this is the time I'll explain to you how did Benzek County end up with six projects instead of five. And that's that we have some of our counties that did not use their full allocation of five projects. And so we had some other counties that were in desperate need of an additional project. So Harrison and Van, and Benzek County may just do, for example, were able to get an extra or six project was a result of that. So some counties didn't need all five. Um, and in those cases, we're able to reallocate a project, an additional project for a few of our counties. So if you look at the map, uh, that's in front of you of the proposed projects, I want to highlight these two of them for you today, show you how this is set up. Let's look at, on project number four, what's called the North South Highway nineteen extension. You see that this is a last mile project, and you know what that means right now is that means that we're actually providing um, as a result of this project, broadband service to the end user, to the residents, or to the business, right? And you see the route where it begins at Benzek County, all the way down State Highway nineteen to the Southern Old Quarter. Then we have a, a purpose to provide high-speed internet service to new and existing businesses in the county in Canton, points north and south. The project lays the groundwork for expected future business growth and provides for redundant fiber backup capacity for projects two, three, and four for all businesses and residents in Benzek County. So this is what I'd call a super duper project because it really addresses multiple uh, needs, all wrapped up in one project for Benzek County. That also provides some middle mile of construction really to support the entire uh, county as well. So that extension is a thirty-five point four mile uh, uh, addition, fiber addition. Um, and again, it's a last mile project. Then jump down to the yellow project. This is an example of your residential project, or this is your residential project. Uh, project number six. This one is to, uh, the goal is to provide high-speed internet service to unserved and underserved, new and existing home-based businesses and full and part-time telecommuters. As it's only two point six mile um, uh, broadband addition, fiber addition. So all these projects, as you can see, one through six are set up that way. So you know what the route is, purpose is, the geographic, uh, starting and ending points and so forth. So we have six projects for under, underserved and unserved businesses, and one project for residential work. And honestly, many of these projects are blended projects as well. The total cost to implement all six of these projects is estimated by PDC two and Design nine, our contractors on this, is thirty-seven million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. In the full broadband report, uh, in chapter four, um, we actually have individual project budgets for this. And you, in your executive summary as well, if you go to uh, this stage, that's just before the map. This executive summary, you can see the cost and the total cost for each uh, each project, uh, one through six. So project one is six point nine million. Project two, ten point six million, and so forth. In chapter four of the full report, it has detailed line item budgets, and then again, the SF four twenty-four budgets for these projects. All right. That covers phase one. I did want to make some comments on the phase two strategy that regional middle mile network as well. Um, there are four segments that are proposed in Benzek County. Um, I'm not really, uh, and by the way, our, our contractors are the ones that uh, put the initial proposal together for the middle mile network. I am not too concerned about um, the actual segments that had been proposed at this point because the middle mile network and the middle mile advisory team is just really at the beginning of the process and figuring out the strategy and the approach for uh, getting this middle mile network in place. And then when we actually get down to project segments on a county by county basis, we have to evaluate where those segments are actually needed and which ones that we need based on the local projects that have been identified. and which ones that we need based on the local projects uh that have been identified through the local project identification process. So based on that, I believe that the segments that you see in the middle mile network are going to change. But no worries, when we get to that point, uh we'll involve uh Van Zandt County officials and ask for your input. What I will tell you is that I'm quite certain at this point that it is highly unlikely that we will have a publicly owned regional middle mile network. There is no appetite in the East Texas region for uh publicly owned network. And all likelihood, we're going to have a privately owned network that's governed by the appropriate um legal agreements to assure that we have a middle mile network that's available to all internet service providers new and existing that they can connect to for an appropriate fee and and complete last mile service. When more details of that, uh how this will work out become clear, we'll bring that back to the court for review and discussion, but actually judge and measure probably to the local project team to to review and discuss at that time. Right now, that team is working on those those basic strategies, legal agreements, and so forth that would need to be in place so that if you have a privately owned network and that network is owned by C I P, the C I P and Scott or whatever reason decided that they're going to sell out and make billions and it goes to another uh somebody else owns this. Oh, we have that. But let's say that they did that. One of the key things that we need to make sure happens is that there's success or arrangements that whoever owns uh the uh the middle mile network, let's say part of it is the C I P that does, that that middle mile network, those agreements to allow access to any high speed provider to complete last mile service still remain regardless of who owns the network. So you can see that we got a lot of work to do in this regard to get this all figured out. Okay. If you go to the next page in the proposal, I just put this map in here of the fourteen county region so you can see the proposed segments for each of the fourteen counties and how that middle mile network connects each of the fourteen counties. Again, each of these segments are going to change in a county by county basis depending on the local projects that were identified in each of the counties. But I wanted you to see that the network, whatever we come up with for uh the regional middle mile network, the whole idea of it is to connect all fourteen counties so that we assure connectivity for broadband implementation. So Judge, Commissioner's Court, today, what I'm asking you for, and with your approval, if you all move forward today and approve this uh regional um broadband uh study and action plan for Van Zandt County, believe it or not, you will have the fifth adopted plan in the region there. A whole bunch of counties that are coming right after you. Thank God, Monday after Thanksgiving, I'm in another county and it keeps going until we got it. It looks like for me, all coming in succession. But you'll have the fifth adopted plan in the region. The next steps, if you approve this plan, is that ECOG staff will begin to uh immediately look for funding, federal, state, and others to implement as many of these projects with your blessing as possible. One comment on that and I'll close and open for questions. There is billions, I mean huge network, billions of federal dollars that's going to be coming down for broadband implementation uh projects like this. This plan puts Van Zandt County way ahead of the rest. And every county in the Texas region that does this puts you way ahead of the rest. Because what usually happens at many of these, often happens, oftentimes, is these grants become available and then they run to figure out their plan and it's it's not put together with the cost, the foresight, and effort that was put in this plan and this position's Van Zandt County be ready to get as much of that money as we possibly can. We expect there to be one to four billion dollars coming through the state broadband office. That's the estimate that that Greg Conti has has shared with all of us. And then there's going to be an additional billions coming through the bipartisan infrastructure law. And then the expectation according uh to federal and state authorities is that over the next three years, beginning in twenty twenty-three, there's going to be multiple additional opportunities to uh for broadband project implementation funding like this uh so that we can go after. We will only go after those uh that fund those funding sources that you are most interested in and be aware of this upfront. If you get federal money, they never, almost never pay for a hundred percent. It's you should plan on a twenty to thirty percent match, matching funds, uh local matching funds to match that federal money. The good news on that is that many of these um many of these federal grants will allow you to use in kind match as part of your match. And the expectation is that uh the uh local broadband internet service providers will also be part of the solution that I've been driving. So uh I think I've already um identified C I P, ECOG, local project team that's worked on this broadband plan together. Today, I'm thrilled with the design nine and P D C two are contractors that have worked diligently to get the appropriate budgets and estimates together as long as buy uh additional activities that needed to get to this point. And Judge, Commissioner's Court, that brings me to the end of the presentation. My request to you, if you're assuming that you are comfortable with it today, is that I've asked the court to consider approval of this broadband um study and action plan with the proposed six most important projects for Van Zandt County. With your approval, that sets your ECOG team free to go after appropriate implementation funding when that money begins to uh be released beginning of the fourth quarter. I hope I haven't given you too much information, but I wanted you to understand the gravity. This is a huge J for Van Zandt County. They've come to this point, and I know some of the commissioners haven't had the um the uh didn't have the opportunity to be involved in the local project team, so it seemed appropriate to give you just a little bit more information so you can understand the impact and uh the blessing that this will bring uh to Van Zandt County in the Texas. But that, Judge, can you say anything?
Any questions? Mr. Cleveland? Is charter spectrum involved in the construction of the aligner, do you know?
We have non-disclosure agreements with pretty much any internet service provider that is willing to give us a a non-disclosure agreement. But what I what I can tell you is that that they may very well be involved in construction of so some of these projects. Uh but at this point, it really doesn't matter which who the internet service provider is or who the one that they'll be interested in in uh in any one of these uh six projects because that matter will be solved through uh public procurement. What we'll do is we'll go after a grant to implement one of these projects. And whenever you're dealing with federal or state money, you have to go through a public procurement process to uh secure uh entity that'll actually uh do the uh construct the network. So they'll have to be public procurement that, well, I didn't go through that process to figure out who it is. The good news is that your local internet service provider ought to have a significant advantage in that process. Why? Because they live in the in the in the county, they understand the needs of the county, and they already have some infrastructure right here. So uh but I think your local internet service provider ought to have a leg up on anyone else that might be coming in outside.
Well, David, the reason I asked that is because charter spec spectrum is already mapped out about thirty-five miles of road that they're going to do construction on here pretty soon in precinct two. And I know that the there's other precincts that they mount out too. So that's they're, you know, they're getting ready to to lay fiber cable and that's what a new aerial installation on existing power company pose.
And Commissioner, I'm happy that they do that. That's great. And if they end up constructing um some of what is needed for some of these projects, you're all that further ahead. Uh we welcome that development. And in case of charter spectrum, I think they bid uh bid and received open spectrum uh through the F C C process some years ago. So if they actually follow through on some of those commitments, that's a good thing.
So grant money would pay for their project?
If they are, uh well, it depends. It depends. If they, you would you would not want to use federal grant money to pay for a project that a company's already committed to doing and they're going to do it. You want to save your federal grant money to those projects that where there's uh uh no identified funding available. So I can't answer that question. My recommendation is you've got a private sector company that is already going to uh take care of a project. Don't thank you, then let's focus on the projects that do not have. And if they actually do need funding, we can uh possibly help them in that process, especially we'll be interested in helping them if it happens to be one of the six projects that are doing it. They have a group in the plan. Does that make sense?
Any other questions?
Any more questions, David? Being none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Van Zandt County broadband study and advisory uh action plan.
Motion made.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaPrent.
Second.
I got two seconds. Uh second by Commissioner Melton. Any other questions or discussion before we vote? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Congratulations, David.
Appreciate it, officer.
And thank everyone for your, I know it's been, seems like years to me that we've been working on it. But uh thank you, thank everyone for your help. Motion carried. We'll move to item number nine, discuss and consider flat revision of lot four of Wildwood Ranch twenty twenty-one subdivision located in Van Zandt County Road thirty-eight twenty.
Yes, sir. If y'all remember three, three or four meetings ago, under the uh state guideline for flat revisions, so there's certain things that the the person doing the revision has to do. We have to post it on our uh on the website for thirty days. This was the day we were going to discuss this, but the person doing the requesting the revision had not brought all the paperwork, all the documents to the that they have to do. So I make a motion at this time we table it.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Pearson to table it.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor of tabling item number nine, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton.
Second, Pierce.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year uh twenty twenty-three budget amendments. So you got a motion by Commissioner LaPrent.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Melton.
Have y'all got any? I don't have any.
I didn't either.
I just wanted to work for approval.
Blank duty papers. Motion receded.
Okay, rescind motion. Second. Seconded or rescinded. There's none to be approved.
Wait a minute. They didn't include me.
For twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-three. There are none. They are none. Okay. No action on number eleven. We'll move to item number twelve, discuss and consider approval of October twenty twenty-two financial and investment report of county treasurer to be entered into the minutes as investors court. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? I'll second it. Uh have a motion as second. Any question or discussion for Kenny? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government in uh approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, do you have any comments on the monthly report?
Uh we have three that have not been turned in, uh which is a little bit unnormal, but uh it's what's happened. We've heard from Susan since this morning. I know she's been real busy with the uh election.
Okay.
I don't. I'm not going to say it's not, but I don't have it. You have it? Sorry about that, Susan.
So then that would make two.
Two, yes.
The interesting note, which one two is?
Well, the two that I'm showing are the uh the library and Agri Lab.
Whatever.
Yeah.
We don't have anybody.
Or one either.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Oh. Okay. Okay, is that a motion to approve the report submitted?
Second, Pierce.
Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion. At this time, we will close the regular session, open session, will move into closed executive session in compliance with section five five one point zero seven two of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase exchange lease or value of real property. We will enter into the executive session at nine fifty.